And accounted for.
Yes.
Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. All right, changes to the agenda. It looks like we need to add the approval of the hiring of Samuel Gamaris. I apologize if I butchered that. As elementary paraprofessional for next year. Anything else?
I want to add under the recognition and acknowledgement to Mrs. Tim and the LOFFA members. Have a little statement here. Put in recognition.
Okay. All right, is there anything else? If not, could I get a motion to approve those changes to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve those changes for the agenda.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Kyle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, now we need to approve the agenda. Could I get a motion for that, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the corrections.
Thank you, Pat. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Amanda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any public input of any kind? Okay. Moving on to recognition of good things happening. National Volunteer Week is April 21 through 27. Thank you to everyone who generously contributes to volunteering at LO. You are very appreciated. And Deb?
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge Mrs. Tim and the LOFFA members. They had their banquet this week and this weekend. And I just want to recognize them for their hard work and their many accomplishments throughout the school year. Their dedication to their learning, their projects, and their competitions is very evident in all that they do, so.
Sounds good, thank you. And as long as Dave wasn't here last month, I'd like to congratulate him on his Cal Stoll Award that he won, so. Thank you. Very good. All right, reports. Student representative.
So graduation is May 24th at 7:00 and all are formally invited. Registration for next year is going on. I don't know if that's done because I didn't have to do it this time. And scholarship applications are in. And then for a senior trip, we are going to the Dells and we're staying at the Wilderness Resort. And we have some bunn passes that are unlimited for all of us that are going.
Sounds like fun.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you Jenna. Student services office.
All right. I'm not going to go through everything. I put everything down here for you guys, kind of like I normally would do. I gave a fall recap of the sports, football, volleyball across country. Any conference awards that were given, voted by the conference, et cetera, et cetera, I put in there. I didn't put all the coaches awards and stuff like that. That's just a long list of the coaches' decisions. This is stuff that's from the districts or the conferences. Kind of gave a quick talk on how each sport did and the seed that they got and how they ended in the playoffs. As you can read there, I did the same thing for winter sports. Boys basketball, girls basketball, one act play and wrestling, zero participants in wrestling. Then the one act playoff that did a great job. This is now our third year doing it. I feel a lot of honor when I can talk with other ADs that we get to have that program. I think it's done better as of late as well. They're learning the processes. I know you can get disqualified by just going over for like two seconds. So they do a good job of really following suit. It's like us getting disqualified in football if we just jumped off sides once. So they do a good job of following that, all the actual dimensions on that and rules. So I'm very happy with the one act play considering, I don't know how many kids, how many schools do it. I think maybe four or five do it in our conference alone, so not even half have that representation. Spring sports are going strong right now as we speak. I've kind of talked about the participants in there and the current record. We have a new AD over at Kingsland who runs the baseball and softball. Grand Meadow owns the track contract. So Pump Gary does a lot of stuff with the track, obviously communicating. We own the golf contract. So I have, my job is probably a little easier on that aspect because we have one golfer. And I can just talk with Nider anytime I need to, so it's less of an issue. Track has 160, 150 kids, just a lot different. So cats' opt of all the ADs that are working hard. Lee does a great job at Kingsland, communicating and trying to find ways to communicate. All the different ways to communicate to different schools is not easy. It's not easy to communicate in one school, let alone four schools, four ADs, and et cetera. So Lee's doing a good job over at Kingsland trying to put it together. Gary's the elder statesman of the group, so he's a wonderful job as well. Some athletic information, just information you have. All the fall coach evaluations were completed and put into their...
Files.
Files. Winter coach evaluations are complete. The 2024, 2025 boys varsity, girls basketball schedules are complete and updated in our school. We will do the junior highs after we get closer when we find out the numbers, obviously. The 2024 varsity football and varsity volleyball schedules are complete and updated in our school. JVs and junior highs are not up yet, that depends on the numbers. Athletic pages on the website are currently up to date, team pictures, coaches, contact information. And then I put in their cumulative head coaching records. They can check on those anytime they're updated. Homecoming is scheduled to be September 23rd to 27th. The volleyball playoff home game on Thursday, September 26th versus Lyle Pachelli. Football will play the home game Friday, September 27th versus Grand Meadow. It will be the tailgate supper that week versus Grand Meadow. The week before that is the 20th, our big game, our home versus Houston in football. As we just found out this week, the Lions Club will be hosting the tailgate supper then, so it'll go back to back. Great. I'll let them figure what they're talking about, but the food sounds pretty good so far. And that's up to Deb. Some recent purchases and stuff like that. I tried to give you anything that I paid for through the athletic programming budget or even my AD budget. There's two separate things. So anything I purchase, I typically put down for you guys. We purchased four new glass backboards and rims for the small gym. Those are extremely outdated. Extremely is not even a good enough word to describe the hoops and the things in there. So those are going to complete overhaul. It was a perfect time to do it because I knew we were overhauling the gym floor. Our small gym will be, I wouldn't say amazing, we can bump it out into 10 feet, but you get the idea. You get what you're working with. So it needed a facelift, thank you for allowing that to happen. I bought new medical supplies, medical kits that are now put on the walls in the small gym and the big gym for any kind of injuries that could be for PE or practice or anything, we have to be prepared. We didn't get in trouble, but the association protester called me because one of the officials just quickly picked up some blood, didn't take anything of it, didn't put the stuff on. He's a great guy, he was at a B and A, he's phenomenal, he just wanted the game. But we have to have that stuff on the walls. So we pulled things, got everything cleaned up right there. And then performance center, we had some additions. We needed some things to check some measurements. We got a vertical challenge or some more plyo boxes because we needed more. Some chalk, resistant vans, and a broad jump mat. So those are things that have been purchased, anything through me. I'm not hiding anything, that's exactly what I bought. So I can give you down to the exact dollar amount if that was needed too. But those are things that I purchased, some future things. We talked about the small gym, maybe an indoor concession stand, small gym window coverage, talked about small gym bleacher. Replace the chairs. We have one bleacher on the ready. We think we can get the second one on the other side, if you've ever seen that. Trophy case project is obviously needs to be finished. And just the football field maintenance with maybe more games. That field's going to have to be much better taken care of, for sure. Some thank yous on my end. I want to thank all the coaches that supervise the weight room. Every coach, sorry. Not every coach. Most coaches dedicate their time in that weight room for two hours a day. Again, they don't get paid, so they're in there helping our kids. We do it multiple different times. Some kids work at the school, some do it before. Three coaches in here do it themselves, so I appreciate that. And they should be committed for that. Again, it's not a paid position by any means. I want to thank Kyle and Nick, Palsor and Nick Sweeney for Sunday. They came over to the football field with me and Aaron and we did house stuff probably and cleaned up the shed and did that kind of repair stuff. Kyle and Nick took, got dirt, added seed, and went right down the middle of the practice field. They filled it, seeded it, filled it, seeded it, that needed to be done a long time ago. They just took the bull by the horn, so thank you to both of them for going above and beyond, which is not a shocker. A big shout out to John Stockdale. Man, he's a star. We talk to a lot of people in Leroy, that guy's a star. Without John Stockdale, I don't know where we'd be sometimes. His transportation, what he does is crazy. If you want that job, I'm sure he'd give it to you, but you're not going to want it. Especially this spring, we got vans and buses crisscrossing, going everywhere. Our kids pick up Grand Meadow kids, go this way. It is an absolute puzzle and how he does it and stays sane is beyond me. So if you ever get a chance to thank John, he's a superstar in my book. Again, I put a congratulations on there to Dave, I was at that award, so was Aaron, and so was Kyle. Not a lot of dry eyes in the room. Stories are special. Hard times make a better man, obviously. So again, Dave, thanks for everything you do. Dean, students reports. These are pretty updated. Kind of have a pretty good idea of the missing assignment policy and everything we do with that. I did attach the graph on the back. It shows you the numbers and a graph of where our F-list are, which is a very important piece to me. Where we've been and how far we've come. The third quarter typically tends to be a trend line of being one of the highest quarters. Fourth quarter because hey, I don't want a summer school, right? First quarter is the start of the year. Second quarter, you have a lot of distractions of Thanksgiving and Christmas. So they can get that stuff caught up prior to those days we get out. That third quarter is a long, dragging quarter. And we see a lot of, I'd say we see more issues than with behavior and academics. So those numbers are all there if you ever want to see it. Everyone says anything, they're right there. You have the numbers yourself. RCD seems to be very good. We've had less people come to the office. Bullying is obviously a hot topic issue. Anytime there's a bullying report, and you even use the word bullying from K through 12, I put it in my report to give you, and that's way too much, but I do it anyways. We had 21 kids or complain, or parents complained about a bullying issue. 19 of those cases were simply just peer conflict where I said you were ugly and you said I was ugly and I told my mom and dad. Not a lot of incidents goes on that, not a lot of basis. There are two reports that I did classify as bullying, in my opinion. Obviously, discipline was handed out where it needs to be and then they monitored. Checking with the kids saying, hey, how's it going? Even if it's simple as, you know, a younger kid just give me, look out my window, give me a thumbs up, thumbs down to tell me, hey, how was his day going? It's that easy of just having that conversation with the kids. Obviously, you have the bullying definition. Career plans. I've checked the seniors three times, September, December, and in April. There's the kind of the plans where the future, where they want to be. Gave you some examples of where they think they want to enter. The juniors, I do two times a year, December and in April. Same exact format, so I have a pretty good idea. I have a Excel spreadsheet that tells me, you know, Tyler Farley and what he wants to do. Now that'll change obviously as sophomores, you get the idea of that. Seniors have changed a little bit, but it's at least nice to know where they want to go and where we can track them. If we got six kids want to go in the medical field, then by golly, we should probably do something to that. So I check all the way down to the sophomores and obviously you can see the information. College career readiness, we're going to go to the SMEC educational fair. That's for the juniors and seniors, that's with area businesses. I know they redid a bunch of the SMEC stuff from last year. Last year's was okay. It was way too long. We didn't need to be in certain sections looking at two schools for 45 minutes. So I think they revamped that a little bit. I think they were talking about some kind of scavenger hunting or something. Attendance, that was a big one. First quarter attendance, second quarter attendance, third quarter attendance, those are exactly it. So it shows the percentage for high school, middle school, your elementary attendance, and then overall attendance for the whole school district. Obviously, just like the grades and discipline, you see that number change throughout as we go. I would say that a 92.2% attendance rate even in the third quarter is pretty good. I could go back and check that if I wanted to. So that's kind of the recap of that. Again, big shout out to Georgine, who is something ever so a bit and working on a billion different projects and battling any sickness that comes with work. She's amazing. Any questions on any of that I can answer? Good to go.
Thanks Trevor.
Appreciate it.
Very good, very thorough.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Erin?
All right, so on my principal report, I left just kind of our PLC goals because we do that every week with the staff. Those are the four main things that we've been working on. And then openings, second grade science and special ed on there. So new things in progress. This is just kind of a busy year of trying to wrap this year up and also start up next year. So finishing teacher evaluations, creating master schedule for next year, student registration for next year. We did have our Zoom night with the parents. MTA testing is starting. And then the elementary does a book blast. So a lot of different things kind of going on right now, like I said, wrapping up this year and then starting next year. So just kind of busy with a lot of just things going on right there. Book blast, I just wanted to mention what that actually is. And I'll tell you, and I apologize for, you know, we sent this stuff out for book blast. What that is in the elementary is it's not a fundraiser. It's where the students come in, it's, they get, they have to put in, they get a form to take home and they got to log on and put in 10 phone numbers or 10 email addresses. And what the book blast company does is they're partnering RE with book companies. And what they're doing is when you give them the names, what they do is they send out asking for a donation. What that goes is towards the books, so offsets some of the cost. So the more money that we can pull in, the more books kids get. They, it's not a fundraiser. They don't use our, the information they get. I talked to a lady today, she said you'll get four emails or four texts throughout the week and a half of the book blast. And then at the completion of it, all of your, all of our information goes into their server and it's locked up. They don't sell it. It doesn't go to vendors, it doesn't go anything like that. So your information, you're not going to get, you know, people calling you or anything like that trying to sell you anything. So it's just strictly for them to try to get donations, so the more donations they get, the more books our kids get. In the end of this, what will happen is all of our kids K through 5 will get at least a book. Last year, every student got six books to take home. To me, we used to do a fundraiser in elementary. I thought this was more productive because kids got books to take home and have at their homes. Not everybody's kids have books at home, it's theirs to keep. If you do this over the years, you kind of build your own library. And the other thing you can do, if you've got a third grader and they read at a fifth grade level, we can request what books they get. So because you're in third grade doesn't mean you have to get third grade level stuff. So they've really tailored it to what our kids need. So and then along the way, they do four treasure chest drawings. It's a treasure chest. I think it's some money, some candy, some gems, jewelry, stuff like that, and then an iPad. So those are things off for our kids. So I just want to try to clear that up for some people because not a fundraiser. Your information isn't being sold to anybody or given out. So it's just used just for the book blast and then it's secure on the other people's server and it doesn't go any further than that. So when the books come in, I'll take pictures, get that out on the website. But it's pretty cool, they're individually wrapped with the kid's name on it and it's kind of like Christmas a little bit and they help get them. So like I said, every kid got six books and I thought that was pretty cool. So that's just, I just wanted to clear that up because I think I saw some things of people talking about a fundraiser or their information getting sent out elsewhere. So hopefully that clears it up. Other than that, like I said, just a lot of things going on right now trying to wrap up the year and start next year at the same time. So any questions for that?
All right. Thanks Erin.
You bet, thanks Erin.
Appreciate it. Jen?
All right, well, good evening, everybody. I just have a couple of quick things for you. Friendly reminder, we do continue even in the spring with doing our mandated emergency drills. So schools must have at least five school lock downs, five fire drills, and one tornado drill. So if you're hearing the sirens go off now, yes, we do that now. We usually don't do the ones in the wintertime, it's actually most things outside. Feel really good about partnering again with the Iron Horse Marathon. They tend to use our lavatories in our bus garage and our grounds. And so don't forget, that'll be coming up on May 4th and they're just awesome to work with. I really enjoy getting communications from them every year to see if we can partner, so we're pretty happy about that. As Mr. Carrier mentioned earlier too, our elementary backboards and hoops will be installed the week of May, kind of around the 15th and 16th of May. We want to do it before the new floors come in, so we don't scratch that new floor. So we strategically decided to do that. Don't forget, we're wrapping up our staff spotlight. Kylie Tartt is our May 1st, so we're pretty excited about that. For Angie, Amanda, and Deb, we have MSEA negotiations coming up. We will of course inform the entire board of what's going on with that. But our opening of that is next week, the 23rd. As I mentioned earlier, the elementary gym floor, that'll be in late May. We'll continue to update you as we get a little closer and know the exact dates on that. But we know for sure it'll be late May and our students can all play outside and have fire class outside too. So we're pretty happy about that. Couple of updates from SMEC they wanted us to share publicly is that their ALC enrollment is currently at 81. Their career day, as Trevor had mentioned, is May 8th. They're holding their first ever prom on May 11th, so that's pretty exciting. So some of our kids will attend that. The SMEC graduation is May 23rd. You're also all formally invited to that as well. And then their last day of school is May 31st. So if you have any questions about that, of course Angie can give you information on SMEC stuff too. But they wanted me to hand that out. Just yesterday, there was a Highway 56 reconstruction project update here in town. Just so you are all aware, we are on the docket to get some plumbing between Cardinal Kids and the outdoor plumbing piece. That's all set and ready to go. So there's no issues there, they already have us in the project. And we do now have a project manager too that will be in regular contact with me with what's going on. So if things should occur though, that maybe are in question in my mind, I'd probably get ahold of Amanda, Kyle, and Dave and have a quick committee meeting and see what we need to do. But so far, so good. It seems, everything seems to be where it's supposed to be.
The last week of school, will we be affected? Like how? Potentially. They're going to start the Tuesday after, yeah. I mean, my understanding was they're starting the Tuesday after Memorial Day. We still have a few days of school left.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what we would do if it would, if...
So they're starting way down there, which is nice, so hopefully they won't like get this far. Okay, all right.
But if they would, what we'd like to do is definitely email our parents of our graduates, especially, you know, because of that graduation day, that evening, Friday night, and then put it out on Facebook. We would do as much marketing and communication as we can to reroute everybody. So, yeah. So the project director and I had that conversation too. He would let me know, but of course we could see too what's happening and like, ah, maybe we better get information out sooner than later.
Yeah, it sounds like it'll be after Memorial Day, so we'll have the graduation done, but it's... I thought there's a few, there's a few days of school left just for like...
There'll be at least two, two and a half, I think.
Yes. Yeah. So maybe they won't get up to us if they...
Hopefully they'll be on time.
Yeah, right, for once, yeah.
As I mentioned last month, I put out an email to the staff and all of you about strategic planning and any inputs if desired. We've gotten a little bit back and so Erin and I, as I promised, in May will complete that kind of communication and narrative with all of you, so expect that in May. And then finally, don't forget that Congress is still in session. They adjourn on May 20th. They will have a recess April 22nd through the 24th. But their deadlines are quickly approaching. April 19th is their deadline for their committee reports and committees what they want. And so I should be hearing a lot of stuff now, kind of the 19th and on, and I'll be sure to continue to email all of you. We just are getting regular updates now and nothing set in stone, so it won't get you all too worked up. But there's a couple of questionable things that I've been sending emails off to our local legislators to help us with. So we'll see what happens. But yeah, as Erin said, we are, it's crazy kind of in our offices how we're ending so much stuff and so many projects, but all these new things, we have to get ready for fall. It's fun, it's a fun time, but it's pretty exhausting right now too. That's it for me tonight.
Any other questions for Jen? If not, thank you Jen, appreciate it. Consent agenda. Approval of the March 19, 2024 regular meeting minutes. Are there any corrections or changes? Do you want to?
Yeah, I noticed in there that at the beginning of it, the initials were wrong. So it says the changes to the agenda, motion by PF and second by DR. I think it should be PA and DF. And then down below that, for the approval of the agenda, it says DR again.
Could be DR if it was Deb.
It was, yeah. Could be Deb.
Oh, yeah, could be. Was it Deb? I didn't look back in my notes. I was thinking Dave Luning and Dave Farling.
I can tell you what I wrote down. I have it right here.
Why didn't you say that earlier, Dave?
So which one, Pat, did you say? Which one?
The...
Agenda says DR, K, S, so Deb and Kyle.
Yep, and then the changes to the agenda says PF and DR.
Yep, that's what I have written, so.
Who's PF?
Who's PF?
Oh, PA, it should be PA. That's what I have in my notes, so I just obviously mistyped.
Yeah, it says PF on here, yeah, okay.
Okay, a minor change.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, treasures reports. Are there any questions or anything on any of that stuff? Okay, no fundraisers. Personnel. Approval of the hiring of the following fall coaches for school year 2024-25. Football head coach Trevor Carrier at $47.92, forty-plus years' experience. Head JV coach Nick Sweeney at $38.33. Head junior high coach Ryan Evans at $28.75. Assistant junior high coach Aaron Hungerholt at $28.75. Head coach for volleyball Lindsay Milks at $47.92. All these are coming off the EA contract Schedule C, by the way. Assistant junior high coach Nick Bly at $27.31. Cheerleading head coach Chris Hansen at $1,052. And assistant coach Stacy Jacobson at $900. And then approval of resignation of Cassidy Stomas as paraprofessional effective April 8th. Approval of the hiring of Nick Schmitz, middle school and high school science teacher for school year 24-25. Approval of the hiring of Mel Luning for high school language arts, school year 24-25. And the addition of, approval of the hiring of Samuel Gamaris, elementary paraprofessional at 8TE for school year 24-25. That was all a mouthful, is there any questions on any of that? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Pat. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Dave. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right. Moving on to policy approvals. So we have policy review of first reading on the following policies, number 407, 408, 409, and 410. Would the policy committee have any, anything to add to any of that?
No changes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the first reading on those aforementioned policies?
Wait a minute. That's the second reading, or no. That's the second reading on those, isn't it? Aren't these... First reading is the bottom half, I think so.
Are we backwards?
Yeah.
I think they're...
Yeah.
I think they're cut and paste it now.
Yeah. These are, these should be second reading, yeah.
All right. Good catch, good catch. All right, it'd be the second reading on policy 407, 408, 409, and 410.
So I make a motion to approve the 407, 408, 409, 410, second reading.
Okay, thank you Deb. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Thanks Amanda. Any questions or discussion regarding that? If not, is there, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. So now we're looking at the first reading of policies 412, 413, 414, 415, 416, 417, 418, and 419. Sounds like you guys are busy. Sounds like you guys are busy.
So the major thing that's different in 416 is the addition of cannabis.
I was gonna ask about that.
Okay, so the, so the one that you, that we currently have does not have that included. But the updated ones from MSBA have a red line in there to include cannabis, since it's been legalized. And so there's several different areas where it's the addition of the cannabis onto the different lines. And then, like where we'd say drugs, alcohol, then it includes cannabis. And then on the, the other one that we had a long discussion on is 418. And that's about the drug-free workplace, and again, it's about the cannabis. And it's about, like, we don't allow any drugs on our...
Campus.
Campus, thank you, unless there's a doctor's prescription. But the recommendation we got initially here is that even if there's a prescription for cannabis, that we're not going to allow that. And so we're gonna look into that as a committee, we're gonna look into that further to see why are they, why are they making that stipulation? And just get more information on it. So we're gonna study it heavy, and if we can come up with enough information, we'll bring it back next month, otherwise we'll...
So as of right now, it's not allowed, right?
Correct.
Right.
In the first reading, okay?
Correct, yeah. And that is based on the red line ones that are from MSBA. And cannabis, the word cannabis is not included in the current ones that are in our books, because this is new. So I think if we're looking at the second, if we're looking at the first reading of the policies, I think we need to be looking at the red line ones, right, Angie?
Yeah.
And then we will study that
Okay.
and get back to you on that. Anything else?
That's good.
No, those are the big things, yeah.
Any questions on any of those policies? If not, could I get a motion to approve the first reading of those policies?
I make a motion to approve the first reading of 412, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Dave. Any other discussion, questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried, all right. No donations. Approval of the hiring of the following fall coaches, who, most of, I guess everybody's a part of this group, so... All right, football, head assistant coach, Kyle Stern, at 3833.
I'll make that motion to approve, Kyle.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Pat. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstains?
Abstained.
All right, volunteer coach, Dave Farlinger.
I'll motion to Dave as well.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Pat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Okay, thank you. Volleyball, head JV coach, Angie Olson.
I'm old to the girl, Angie.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Dave. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Abstained.
Thank you. All right, very good. All right, we need to approve the senior class trip to the Wisconsin Dells.
I have their little sheet she left for me, if you want additional details.
Are they looking for more chaperones or anything like that?
No, I tried. So this school board policy, that if they go across state lines, the board does have to approve. And that's why it's in front of you tonight.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the class trip?
I'll make them. Go ahead, Dave.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the class trip to Wisconsin Dells.
Thank you, Deb. Thanks, Pat, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, I guess they can go on the class trip. Wouldn't they be disappointed if they...
Oh, yeah, yeah. They're staying in one of these new, I was telling Deb the other day, they're staying in one of these new treehouse cabins at the Wilderness.
Oh, really?
So, I think they got my circle.
Okay. All right, calendar update, April 16th, which is today, we had a discussion with Aaron, that's still ongoing. April 23rd, MSEA contract negotiations at 3:00 PM. May 3rd is mid-quarter. May 14th, district policy committee meeting. May 24th is graduation. 27th is Memorial Day. May 31st is a staff development checkout day in no school. Anything else that anybody has? If not, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Pat. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Kyle, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, meeting adjourned.
6:36?